Good evening and welcome everyone. Thank you for joining us tonight for this public hearing. This is a public hearing for the Eagle permit Monroe Power Plant National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit. My name is Ryan Blazek. I'm with Eagles Environmental Support Division. I'll be assisting with moderating and also the hearings officer for the hearing tonight. Before we get too far into it, though, just have a couple of things to go through. This is kind of our agenda for tonight. We have gone through the introduction right now. In addition to making your statement at the hearing, I'm also going to identify in other ways where you can make an official comments. And then we'll go into that official hearing. We have a chance to make a statement for the record on this permit. And then we'll also go through who to contact for further questions. A couple logistical things. All lines are muted during the webinar. If you have any technical questions or questions about the format, you can use the questions box in your Zoom toolbar. There will not be a question and answer session tonight about the permit. It's strictly going to be the public hearing where you have a chance to make a statement. And then also, we are recording this hearing, so you can view the recording a couple of days after the hearing. It'll be on our YouTube channel. You receive a follow-up email on that. So we're going to go ahead and get started. I'd like to invite our other Eagle staff who are on the line to go ahead and unmute their microphones, turn on their cameras, and please introduce yourselves.
Good evening. I'm Christine Alexander and I manage permit section within the Water Resources Division of Eagle. My section is responsible for issuing National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System permits for the state of Michigan.
Hello everyone. My name is Tarek Buckmaster and I supervise the Industrial and Stormwater Permits Unit and Permit Section. And our unit is responsible for issuing industrial and PDS permits throughout the state.
Good evening. My name is Christine Aiello. I'm an environmental quality specialist working in the Industrial and Stormwater Permits Unit, and I helped develop the draft permit that's the subject of tonight's meeting.
All right. Thank you all for joining us and being on the line tonight for the hearing. We're going to go ahead and get into it. I'm going to start off with the other ways to submit an official comment. Just in case you are listening and didn't want to make a statement tonight. You can also go to the My Waters Public Hearing Comments forum that's in My Waters at this link. And we'll be putting that in the chat. And this comment period for the public hearing tonight will remain open until midnight, June 16th tonight. It closes at midnight because this public or this permit was public notice back in October 26th, 2021 through December 20th, 2021. And this is an additional way to make comments for this permit. All right, we're going to go ahead and get started with the public hearing. I have a hearing statement. As I mentioned, I'm the hearings officer tonight, and this is kind of a formalized statement, but I'm going to read this off. Related to the procedures, how the commenting process will work, and that's some information on the permit. Eagle proposes to reissue a National Pollutant Discharge Elimination System Permit to DTE Electric Company for the Monroe Power Plant located at 3500 East Front Street in Monroe, Michigan. Eagle granted request for this public hearing based on comments received during the public notice of the draft NPDS permit. The public notice was held from October 26th, 2021 to December 20th, 2021. The public hearing will be used to take additional comment on this draft permit. For those of you who pre-registered to attend tonight's hearing and indicated you would like to make a comment, we will call your name and unmute your microphone so you can make your comment. We will call your name in the order in which you registered. Once we have called the names of everyone who indicated they wanted to make a comment during registration, we will open it up to comment from other attendees. At that time, if you have not made a comment and wish to do so, so please click the raise hand icon to indicate you wish to make a comment. If calling by phone only, please press pound two on your phone to raise your hand in Zoom. We will call on those who have their hand raised to make a comment in the general order in which their hand was raised. Each person will have five minutes to make their comment. I will indicate when you have one minute left and when your time has expired. If I indicate your time has expired, please wrap up your comments immediately so we can allow the next person to make their comment. Please be sure to state your name and any organization you represent prior to starting your comment. If you'd like to make a comment, but do not wish to make a verbal comment during this hearing, you're welcome to submit a written comment to the department until midnight tonight. Written comments may be submitted online in My Waters and a link is being provided in the chat directly to the My Waters comments supplemental form. The hearing is being recorded and your comments become part of the information the department will consider in its decision concerning the proposed draft permit. Comments received will not be responded to at this time, but we be included in a response to public comment documents and become part of the public permit record. All comments and information received will be available in My Waters, our online database. The public comment period is open until midnight tonight, June 16th, 2022. Now some information on the proposed permit. The proposed draft permit authorizes a discharge of waste waters associated with steam electric power generation to Lake Erie in Monroe County from Monroe Power Plant in Monroe, Michigan. The draft permit includes four new schedules of compliance. One scheduled compliance for fly ash transport water pursuant to EPA's steam electric rule, which took effect September 30th, 2015. And three schedules of compliance, one for bottom ash transport water, one for flue gas desulfurization wastewater, and one for cessation of coal burning activities pursuant to EPA's final steam electric reconsideration rule, the final rule, which took effect October 13th, 2020. EPA's final rule allows permittees to pursue several pathways to compliance with the rules for bottom ash transport water and flue gas desulfurization wastewater. And the proposed draft permit reflects this allowance. The four new schedules of compliance are set forth in the draft permit in Part 1A 15, Part 1A 16, Part 1A 17, and Part 1A 18. Permit requirements related to these new schedules of compliance are incorporated into Part 1A 1, 1A 4, 1A 5, 1A 6, and Part 1A 7 of the draft permit. All right. Thank you all for listening to that. We're going to go ahead and get started here. So and again, just to recap, I guess, kind of some of the ways, you know, how are we going to do this tonight? I have a list of people. Everyone who registered could have indicated whether they want to make a comment or not. And I will go through the list of people who wanted to make a comment and identified that when they registered. After we get through all of those names, we're going to go to people who raise their hand and then we'll go into the in the order that their hands were raised. And so everybody will have a chance to make a comment tonight. It'll be one comment per person. You'll have five minutes to make that comment. And again, I'll be giving a one-minute warning or heads up when you're getting close to that five-minute mark. The way this will work is we'll call your name. For this list, I'll also call the name of the person who's on next, so you know that you're coming. We'll unmute you on our end. You can unmute yourself on your end, and then you can begin your comments. Also, please identify yourself if you have affiliation and also please mention your name. And then if you're on the phone, you can select pound two to raise your hand and in the Zoom platform and we'll unmute you. So with that, we're going to go ahead and get started. The first person on my list is Dana Mohammed. So Dana, we're going to find you on our list. We're going to unmute you. And then you'll have a chance and then you can unmute yourself. So let's see here. And Matt, do you see Dana in here?
No, I do not.
All right. So next up then is Mark Jones and then after Mark could be Penny Clement. So Mark, we're going to unmute you.
Not seeing Mark either.
Okay. Penny Clement is next, followed by Brendan Rodriguez. So Penny.
And I am not seeing Penny.
No Penny. What about a Brennan?
No.
Okay. And then Shannon Irvin, followed by Elena Saxonhouse. So Shannon, okay, it looks like you're unmuted on our end. You're unmuted on your end. You can begin whenever you're ready.
Hello, can you hear me all right?
Yep, we can hear you. It sounds good.
Good. Hi, my name is Shannon. I am with the Michigan League of Conservation Voters. I am also a graduate of Western Michigan with the degree in freshwater science and sustainability. I wanted to submit a public comment today, you know, in affiliation with MLCV, but also personally, I do this work because I care about Michigan's ecology, the primary aspect of which is our Great Lakes, which is a huge privilege as a Michigander to have access to the Great Lakes, but also a massive responsibility. And as part of this responsibility, it is important for us to take note of every small impact, rather direct or indirect to the Great Lakes. And this wastewater treatment through the DTE coal plant is a direct threat to our Great Lakes. Lake Erie, of course, is used as a drinking water source, and that makes it all the more critical. But we are responsible for 20% of the world's accessible fresh water. And we need to take that into consideration when we are allocating resources into non-renewable energy. I would rather see our resources be put into green energy and seeing how the wastewater permit directly impacts the ability for this DTE to continue this practice. I strongly would like to voice that I do not want DTE to receive a wastewater permit from Eagle. Sending the warm water back into Lake Erie contributes to the threat of algal blooms and also contributes to the threat of polluting our water source so that it is no longer safe or healthy to drink for ourselves, but also for the ecology and fora and fana within Lake Erie and all of our other Great Lakes. In studying water, one of the biggest aspects was knowing the connectivity and the impact that we have from a large scale, but also on a small scale. So while this might be one facility that is contributing, it is contributing to a larger issue. And I don't want to see us allowing this to go any further. And I am hopefully invoicing my opinion to those who can understand the importance of our water system here in Michigan. It is a gem among gems, and I would like to voice again that I do not want this permit to be issued. That is all. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Shannon. All right. So after Shannon, we have Elena Saxonhouse, followed by Irma Lee Hart. So Elena, it looks like you're unmuted on our end. You can unmute yourself on your end and begin when you're ready.
Okay, I think I'm unmuted now. Can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you.
Great. My name's Elena Saxonhouse. I'm a managing attorney with the Sierra Club's Environmental Law Program. And Sierra Club has already submitted extensive written comments, as Eagle knows, but I wanted to quickly highlight one point that didn't get as much attention in those comments, but is very important for Eagle to be considering and for the public to be aware of and to share a little additional research on that issue. And this is the issue of Monroe's discharge of bromide compounds from its flue grass gas scrubbers, which may be harming downstream drinking water supplies and is currently going completely unregulated by Eagle in this draft permit. Bromides are toxic discharges that are harmful in their own right, but are especially dangerous when they come into contact with the disinfectants used in the drinking water treatment process. That process creates disinfectant byproducts that have been linked with cancer. And Monroe discharges into Lake Erie not far from several drinking water intakes, including the city of Monroe and Frenchtown Township. And the American Water Works Association, which is an association of drinking water treatment professionals, has specifically called out Monroe as one of the top plants in the whole country to be scrutinized for its bromide discharges. So given all that, I took a look at the data collected by the Environmental Working Group on the tap water of Monroe and Frenchtown Township. And in both areas, reports the levels of the very same, you know, dangerous disinfectant byproducts that you would expect to see if the source water had high levels of bromides were reported at hundreds of times the Environmental Working Group's safe levels. Some of the levels of other types of contaminants were high as well, but these particular compounds really stand out as being at concerning levels. So this raises serious concerns about the lack of any treatment for bromides at Monroe. Although the US EPA has not placed specific limits on bromides, it has recommended that states consider regulating these discharges on a case-by-case basis. And the Clean Water Act also requires that Eagle use its best professional judgment to require the best technology available to reduce these discharges, which Eagle has not done in this permit. And although this permit, of course, does not regulate tap water itself, it is Eagle's responsibility to make sure that the Monroe plant is not contaminating the source of that tap water, Lake Erie, more than would be the case with the best technology available. Again, the draft permit currently does not consider this at all, and so Eagle needs to do much more in the final to address this issue. And of course, there's a number of other issues raised in our written comments, but that's all I wanted to just highlight this evening. Thank you for the opportunity to speak.
Thank you for your comment. Next person on my list is Irma Lee Hart, followed by Pat Smith. So. Yep, we can hear you. You can begin your statement whenever you're ready.
Thank you. My name is Irma Lee Hart, and I am a Great Lakes organizer with the Michigan chapter of the Sierra Club. I also chair the Water Committee of the Detroit City Council Green Task Force. And I'm also co-state lead for Michigan with the Healing Our Waters Great Lakes Coalition. I oppose this permit for these reasons. First, we have a Great Lakes fishery that's worth $11 billion. And Lake Erie, as we should know, has the most fish out of all of the other Great Lakes combined. And anything that threatens the fisheries should be avoided at all cost. And you know, a threat to the fishery, you know, negatively impacts the lake, but not just on an environmental basis, but also because of the economics. And it's a travesty when we're doing that and allowing that to happen. The western basin of Lake Erie is already plagued, as has been stated, by toxic algal blooms, which are choking the life out of the western basin, causing dead zones, et cetera. And the toxic algal blooms are worsened by the temperature of the water. Allowing hot water effluent creates a hazard and increases the probability of the growth of these toxic algal blooms. And we already know what happens when they become toxic due to the temperature of the water and the amount of phosphorus and nitrogen. We've seen the devastation. We've seen the impact of that when Toledo was not able to drink their drinking water because of the micro system toxin. Also, we just received through the Infrastructure Investment and Jobs Act, a $1 billion Great Lakes Restoration Initiative of, you know, funding to us to address beneficial use impairments in Great Lakes areas of concern. So allowing this hot water discharge, knowing that it has negative, you know, because of its temperature and the toxins, really is counterintuitive to the direction of a clean, healthy Great Lakes basin and counterintuitive to this huge massive influx of dollars that the president himself has called on a game changer. So I think we really need to rethink this approval and do all that we can, as so many of us do on a daily basis, to restore and protect our Great Lakes to health, to a healthy state. And, and you know, we're also familiar, we all know about the IPP report on climate change. So every, everything we do, we need to move towards clean energy. And we've got the Michigan Healthy Climate Plan, and I was one of the many people who helped contribute and met regularly and read and reread to try to, you know, promote the Healthy Climate Plan. So this decision is really counterintuitive to a lot of the really hard work that's being done in Michigan to protect our water resources. So I'd ask that you rethink this decision and do all that you can to protect our water resources. Thank you.
Thank you for your comment, Irma. Next up is Pat Smith, followed by Kim Finacy. So Pat, we're going to find, see if you're in our attendee list here.
Not seeing Pat.
Not seeing Pat. Okay, Kim. Finacy, followed by Andrew Sarpolis. Sarpolis, all right, Kim, it looks like you are unmuted on our end and on your end. You can begin when you're ready.
Okay, thank you. I'm born and raised in Detroit, Michigan. I have moved away to different states and have been to different places around the world. We are known for our Great Lakes, our beautiful wonder of Great Lakes. And if this rubber stamp is given to DTE Energy, this amounts to a handout to Big Coal, which is trying to prolong the life of this obsolete coal plant by fighting regulations that will protect our Great Lakes. So the Monroe plant is being allowed to continue to suck up all of this water and killing the fish and other wildlife in its cooling system. And to dump those hundreds of millions of gallons of water into our waterways every day, it's definitely not acceptable. It shouldn't be acceptable anywhere, but definitely here, not in Michigan. When our Great Lakes represents over 20% of the world's fresh surface water. And so Eagle needs to deny this, this license to keep polluting our Great Lakes and to reject the fossil fuel handouts. Also, according to the EPA toxins release inventory in 2019 and in 2020, the plant discharged water over 30,000 pounds of toxic chemicals, including nickel, selenium, zinc, mercury, arsenic, lead, and so many, so many other toxins that weren't even listed yet. So DTE wants this permit to continue to pollute, profit, and prosper while our health and our Great Lakes, known all over the world, is ruined. Thank you.
Yeah, thanks for your comment, Kim. All right, next up, Andrew Sarpolis or Sarpolis, followed by Rebecca Woolery. Andrew, it looks like you're muted on our end. You can unmute yourself with the mute icon. It looks like a little microphone should be in the lower left-hand portion of your screen. All right, Andrew, what we will do if you're not able to unmute yourself, we'll give you a minute or two after our next, we'll give you a minute or two, we'll go to our next person who wants to make a statement and then we'll come back to you. So next up is Rebecca Woolery, and then we'll come back to Andrew and see if he's able to get his microphone issue worked out. So Matt, do we have Rebecca? Not seeing.
No, we do not.
You're not seeing Rebecca. All right. So Andrew. All right. So we're just going to have to move on. Andrew, if you're able to hear us, you can also make your comments via My Waters at the link we shared before that's in the chat, and we'll go through the details on that again after we take other people's statements. And if you do get that worked out, feel free to raise your virtual hand in Zoom and we'll call on you in turn. So we've gotten through the list of names that indicated that they wanted to make a comment when they registered. Now, anybody else who is on the line right now can raise their hand and we'll start calling on people in turn in order they raise their hands. You can just do that using the click hand icon at the bottom of your screen. And then we'll unmute you on our end. You can unmute yourself and then you'll be able to make your statement. There are a couple of people who are calling in by phone. If you're calling in by phone and you want to make a statement, just type in pound two on your phone and that will raise your hand in Zoom. And then we'll call on you, unmute you, and then you'll be prompted to unmute yourself on your phone. So with that, we're going to go ahead and get started with people who have their hands raised. All right. First up is Jane O'Neill. So Jane, it looks like you are unmuted and you can make your comment or start it when you're ready.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yep.
Okay. My name's Jane O'Neill, and I own property in the Norvell Lake Creek Shed in the River Raisin watershed. The Monroe plant is many miles from my property, but I'm painfully aware of the fact that the entire ecosystem is connected, as are all of us. What you do in Monroe contributes to what happens all along the watershed and throughout our Great Lakes. I urge the Michigan Department of Environment, Great Lakes, and Energy to deny the permit that would allow DTE to continue along its well-established path of destruction of our environment. There are better ways to supply the demand for electricity, ways that DTE uses in other places, places right here in Michigan. When it is well documented what kinds of disastrous climate impacts we will soon face, indeed, many people are already facing in our world. It is incomprehensible to me why DTE would be allowed to use antiquated once-through cooling when the better closed-cycle cooling is used throughout the country. We are stewards of the Great Lakes and we need to protect them. We need to protect the wildlife that lives in and around them, and we need to protect the future of our children. We need to be working on cleaner ways to meet our needs, not clinging to one of the dirtiest coal plants in the country. Please make Michigan a place that cares for the environment. Please deny this permit. Thank you.
Thank you for making your comment, Jane. All right. And it looks like Andrew was logged in a couple of times, but it looks like his hand is raised. He's unmuted on our end. Andrew, are you able to?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yep, we can hear you. You can go ahead.
Yeah, I don't know. I didn't get a box the first time. I don't know what's going on with that. But, um, okay, I'll just go ahead and get my comment here. So good evening. My name is Andrew Sarpolis. I'm representing myself today. I have a long memory of the plant in question tonight, spanning back to my childhood. My father was an avid fisherman, and we used to have a boat that we would take out on Lake Erie and we would pass the plant. So I saw it many times and I'm familiar with the waters around it. And even in those days, the thermal impacts on the lake were well-known amongst fishermen, as were many of the other impacts with the coal plants. And research into a number of impacts that has come to light shows even more of how we have continued to treat our watershed in an unsustainable manner, including the fact we allowed the plant to dump toxic chemicals from coal ash into the waterway for generations, along with another, a number of other chemical impacts like bromides. Certainly, anybody familiar with the history of Lake Erie remembers the stories about its tributaries catching fire or being horribly contaminated. The last few generations were not good stewards of the Great Lakes, and we're still experiencing many problems with agricultural runoff, legacy contamination, and algal blooms, a situation which is not made better by the large amounts of thermal discharge that are allowed to enter the lake. These situations already impact wildlife like the fish, but permitting a minimum compliance strategy for a plant that is also the second-largest climate polluter exacerbates an already unfortunate situation even further. This plant pollutes our air. It alters our climate in ways that will take generations to fix, and it harms our wildlife and the lakes. Should a plant that is such a strong environmental blight deserve to get a free pass on installing environmentally-friendly technology that exists on one of its neighboring facilities right down the road? Personally, I don't think so. So I ask Eagle, please reject this strategy and reconsider. Thank you for your time.
Thanks for your comment, Andrew. All right, is there anybody else on the line who would like to make a comment, who hasn't made a comment already? Again, you can click the raise hand icon at the bottom of your screen. If you're on the phone, there are some phone, phone callers. You can select pound two, and that will raise your hand in Zoom, and we'll call on you in turn. So it looks like Kathleen Slaniger. Looks like we just lost Kathleen. All right, Kathleen, it looks like your hand is raised. We're going to unmute you on our end. And you can begin your comment when you're ready.
Thank you. I am a nurse, and sort of an asthma educator, and I'm most concerned with the health impacts of this decision. And I'm urging you to not pass this because the amount of discharge that goes into the water, the amount of discharge that goes into the air, these are affecting people in health ways like never before. And I am, as an asthma educator, I'm really concerned about the quality of air in the area and as well as the rest of, you know, the downstream effects of that. There's some data that shows that in 2021, DTE Monroe was the fourth-highest emitter of SO2 in the state and the second-highest emitter of NOx and had 28 Clean Air Act violations and two Clean Water Act violations in the past five years. That's showing their incapacity perhaps to, to do anything about this. So Eagle needs to not approve this request and have them go back to the drawing board perhaps. Thank you.
Thanks for your comment, Kathleen. All right. We did have a phone-in caller who had their hand raised, but I'm not seeing it raised now. If you tried calling in and selecting pound two to raise your hand, and you want to make a comment, please do that again, because your hand doesn't raise. So if you're on the phone, select pound two if you want to make a comment. Is there anybody else on the line who would like to make a comment who hasn't yet spoken? All right, not showing anyone right now, but I'll give it a couple seconds here. And while I'm doing that, I just want to mention that we will be showing that link and information for making a comment, which you can do through midnight, midnight tonight on our My Water System. If you did not want to make a comment verbally tonight, then leave that opportunity. And I'm still not seeing any hands raised. So we're going to go ahead and close out the hearing tonight. And to do that, I basically have a closing hearing statement. As a reminder, the public comment period for accepting written comments is open until midnight tonight only, June 16th, 2022. The department will consider all comments received until midnight tonight. Written comments may be submitted online in our My Waters database, and a link is provided in the chat directly to the comments in the form. Thank you for your comments and cooperation. We appreciate your interest and that you took the time to be here today. The public hearing is now closed. Thank you again. So again, I would have the screen up here with the additional ways to make a comment. You'll see the link here, and it should be in the chat, and that's until midnight tonight, where you can still make that comment. And then if you have any follow-up questions to the hearing tonight, you can contact Christine Aiello. And because there's some people on the phone, I'm going to go ahead and read off this information. You can contact Christine at 517-294-0984 or by email at aiellocmichigan.gov, G-O-V, or Tarek Buckmaster at 517-230-4233 or at email buckmastert@michigan.gov. And that's m-i-c-h-i-g-a-n dot G-O-V. And then before we wrap tonight, Christine, did you have any final comments for us? Anything you wanted to say before we wrapped?
Yeah, thank you, Ryan. I just want to thank everyone again for taking time out of their, of their busy life to convey their comments on this draft permit, and all will be considered before we make a final decision. So thank you again for joining us.
Yeah, thank you, Christine. Yeah, thanks to all of our people on the panel tonight, or Eagle staff and everyone for calling in and make comments today. Just a reminder, this public hearing is recorded, and it will be on our YouTube channel here in a couple days. So with that, this ends the hearing. I hope everybody has a great rest of their evening. Thank you.